Annual meeting and budget hearing to order. The notice of this meeting was published on October 12th and October 19th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to recognize the members of the Holman Board of Education. Board members, please rise when I state your name. Chris Lau, Barb Wench, Maggie Smith, Bridget Todd Robbins, Kadija Islam, Lindsay Need, and Student Representative Crystal Lee. Okay, we appreciate all you do. Thank you. Next, I would like to recognize our district officials and would like to ask all district officials to stand at this time. Next, I would like to thank Travis Udell, Stacy Lockington, and all others involved in preparing this annual meeting. So, thank you. All right, moving on to item 1.6, which is the District Administrator's Report. I welcome District Administrator Dr. Kristen Mueller to present.
Well, good evening. Thank you for all being here. It's my honor tonight to share with you about our school district and also about our past 22-23 school year. So, I first wanted to start with just telling you a little bit about our district, who we are. This past year, we had 300, 3,000, sorry, 879 students in our district in seats in that we served. There are 421 public school districts in Wisconsin, and we are the 44th largest district. Our district is made up of 3.7% multilingual learners. We have 25.2% economically disadvantaged and 13.8 students with disabilities. A big shout out to our Nutrition Services staff. They served this past year 744,425 breakfasts and lunches. And with that, 28% of our students qualified for our free and reduced meals within that. So, congratulations to them, and we thank them for that. Basically, who are we? Our vision in the School District of Holman, many of have heard this, and is belong, serve, succeed. So, everything we do, we look at this to guide us. Our mission of preparing students for tomorrow through an engaging and inclusive educational community today is what drives us and what we, whenever we're making decisions, and what we do every day. This is what... And then, our core values, this is our purpose, what we believe in, is empowerment, equity, excellence, integrity, and safety. So, getting into some highlights from this past year, we had a National Blue Ribbon School. Prairie View was named that. They were one out of eight schools in Wisconsin to get this distinguished award that we are so proud of. It affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and our communities in creating a safe and welcoming school where students master challenging and engaging content. So, to get a National Blue Ribbon School, they were honored due to the high, being high achieving, and a lot of that was through their school report card. So, we thank all of our staff that contributed to all that hard work. We also were very fortunate this past year to be honored as a model PLC at Work School. What that is, is a professional learning community school, and this was at Viking Elementary. Out of about 500 schools and districts in the United States and Canada received this award, but Viking Elementary was one of six elementary schools in Wisconsin to be recognized this past year. This fits a lot of our work and what we do in the School District of Holman because it's around that collaborative culture of working together to improve student learning. So, this was a great honor, and I just think of, granted Prairie View and Viking got these great awards. It was all of our staff across all of our buildings that really contributed to making this happen. So, congratulations to them. Then, moving on to our activities, our students excel in academics and the arts outside of the classroom through a multitude of opportunities. And here are a few highlights. In the upper left there, that is Dean Teal and Harmon Verk. They were recognized in the state's Bellingby. They're middle school students. And then, in the top right, we had, this is through our career tech ed programming, we had Jake Anderson and Ben Strupp were, received second place in their Top Tech Challenge. And then, the bottom left, our Holman High School band participated in the Relia Quest Bowl down in Tampa and came home with, it was two handfuls of trophies, we'll say. And that was a national competition, which just shows... And then, lastly there, Avery Schmidt, eighth grader, advanced to the Nationals for National History Day. These are just a few of many of our distinguished activities, academic activities that happened outside of the school day. We also have a couple more I wanted to share is our DECA. We had 18 individuals advance on to International Conference and our middle school noetic learning math contest winners. We had a large amount of them. So, it just shows you, there's a lot of great things going on during the school day, but also outside the school day. Take great pride in extending the learning beyond the school day. Then, also, within this past year, when it comes to athletics, here are our 22-23 state appearances. The list seems to get larger every year, but, you know, great, a lot of hard work and dedication goes into being a well-rounded individual. And here we have our dance team, we have girls cross-country, golf, boys' golf, our Special Olympics. We had seven individual wrestlers and two state track and field medalists this past year. So, congratulations to all of them. But then, I can't go on without saying, our Transportation Department, they drove over 500,000 miles transporting over 3,000 students. So, we thank them for all their work. And then, in the bottom left is Maggie Hubbard. She was chosen as General Mills Trailblazer, which is another national recognition. So, we thank her. And in the top right, our Facility Services Department, they were honored with a 2023 Safety, Security, and Wellness Award through the Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials. And then, our bottom right is our own, Travis Udell was recognized at the state and national level with the public relations that happens within our district. So, it's very exciting when you're able to share about the district, and every department and area has something to celebrate from the past year. And then, I just want to highlight a few of our teaching staff. We have outstanding, high-quality staff in our district. But here, Heather Bruski, it's quite an honor. She was the 2023 Herb Cole Fellowship recipient. And then, we had Donna Callaway, well, Heather Bruski, she's at the high school as our marketing in our business department. And then, Donna Callaway, she was recognized as a top-notch teacher, and it was really around her sense of compassion, energy, and sense of humor in working with many of her students over at the high school. And then, we have Robin George, an elementary teacher in our district, who was the 2023 Junior Achievement Teacher of the Year. So, our staff have been really going to high levels with all they're doing for our students. Now, now I'm going to show you some measurable results. You know, first I just showed you some things that were happening, happened this past year, but now I want to share some measurable results, which can also be found in, we also have a supplement report, annual report book. And I'm going to go through just a few of our measurable results, but all of them can be found in that book at your leisure. So, in the district, we focus on five areas and monitor measures within all five of these areas, just to ensure that we have a healthy, well-balanced district. So, student learning, fiscal, workforce, community engagement, and health and safety are those five areas that we consistently monitor our progress within. This is our dashboard from this past year in 2023, which displays progress towards long-term goals of a strategic plan. The green displays that results have been met or exceeded in that target area. Yellow means we improved from the prior year, but haven't quite met our long, the goal that we set for that year, which these goals are also, in many times, ones that we're looking out for in a three-year period, three-to-five-year period of time. And then, the red square, excuse me, indicates that we did not meet the goal this past year and need to put more focus in making that long-range goal in the future. So, I'm now going to get into a little detail of some of these. Before I do that, though, within our results, you're going to see in many of our charts, there's a blue square on our graphs, and that represents our peer districts. We recalibrated our peer districts in 21-22. So, now you will see within our annual report, this new set of peer districts being used for comparison. So, sometimes in some of the charts, you might see a little bit different trend than in past years due to that, and it's denoted with an asterisk. So, the first measure that I wanted to share is, this is a four-year graduation rate. So, here, the 2022 graduating class had a graduation rate of 95.6%. That is the red diamond, which represents Holman. Our peer districts were updated, as I had mentioned, and they, we have fallen slightly below them. They are the blue diamond, and we are well above the state average, which is, sorry, the blue square, which is the green triangle. This here, this is our overall proficiency in English Language Arts, according to the Wisconsin Ford, in math. This is a trend over time. This is the exam for grades three through eight students. So, our district continued to outperform the state and our peers with 49.1% in English Language Arts. So, you can see we're above our peers and, and these are our new calibrated peers and the state. And then, our math achievement has significantly improved, climbing to 48.5% of students scoring proficient, placing us slightly below the average of our peers, but well above the state average. So, you can see in comparison how we are doing. And this is all data from, lagging data from 21-22. At our next board meeting, you'll get some updated data from, that Kim Edwards will present for you. Then, our ACT, this is a state assessment that all of our 11th graders take. It's part of our state accountability measures. For the 21-22 school year, our students earned an average composite of 19.2, which is slightly under the average of our peers, but the same as the state. So, we're right, right where everyone else is. And I know we've been working hard to pull out ahead. Lots of work going into that. This is a chart, this is our fiscal measure I wanted to show you this evening. This is our fund balance as a percentage of our total expenditures in that. For 22-23, you can see we have, we're at approximately 31%, which is still above our target range. Our target range is represented by these red arrows. That's where we, the board has set a goal to be within, but you can tell that it has decreased rapidly. We are currently using it for some ongoing expenses. Fund balance is best used for one-time expenses. So, we, if we keep using our fund balance for ongoing, we'll continue to see a rapid decline unless we change what we are, how we are budgeting our ongoing expenses. We need to start figuring out some other funding sources for that. And Julie Holman in her presentation for budget will share more for, on the fund balance going into 23-24. Workforce, not going to go into too much detail here. This is basically, our quality staff are very important, and retaining our staff is important. This is a measure of all our different staffing categories and our retention rates, does not include retirements. So, you can see, in most cases, almost every one of those areas has increased in retention, except for our educational assistance in the past year, well, from 2021 to 21-22. This is a new measure this year. This is, has to do with a lot of our work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. We, our students have indicated that to feel like they belong in our schools, it means to see people that look like them. So, what this graph is displaying is the percentage of our staff represented in blue of our different race and ethnic, and ethnicity categories as compared to orange, which is our student representation. So, our goal would be to have the blue and orange pretty much be 50-50. So, that would mean they're the same ratios of staff and students. So, you can see we have some work to do, and we are monitoring this. A lot of times, it depends on how many students you have in the categories, too, as to percentages can definitely be, you know, sway a lot more on that. Open enrollment, this is one chart that improved, we're closing the gap here slowly. You can see with the recalibration of peers, our peers, our gap is much less to our peers when we recalibrated. We actually have a positive net change. This is all of our public school open enrollments. So, these are students that live in our resident area, and they, it's the difference in the amount of students that open and roll out to a public school versus the amount of students that open and roll in. So, we were up 18 students in, from 2021 to 21-22. And then, belong is one of our big focus areas, especially in our diversity equity work. These next two charts aren't in the annual report, but are pulled out by just a question. This is a survey question on our survey, and this is one of the measures on our dashboard that we were monitoring individually, and that's, "I feel like I belong at school." This is why we have really, this year, focused our work around the diversity, equity, inclusion, and we have our committee, our board committee around that, because right now, we are showing that 69% of our students are saying, "I feel like I belong at school." So, our goal is 90%, so we have work to do here. Our families, our families, our goal is 90%, our families are at 89%. So, we're very close to our goal with our, with our families, but there's work to do there also. And then, I just, at the end here, want to give an update on our referendum. So, this past year, we passed our referendum with two questions. The first question was for $650,000 to renew the current technology referendum. That was up, was one renewal of one, but now it is recurring. And then, the other one was to support the 70, almost 75 million for building improvements. This chart shows you our progress on those. Our middle school drawings and designs have actually gone out to bid. They are due later this week. We're going to find out how they come back. Very exciting. The Viking school design is about complete. We're in the final stages of that, and we'll be showing you some pictures this evening. And that will be going out to bid here very shortly. And then, Evergreen Design is in progress, hoping to be done in February to go out to bid. So, basically, this summer, we will have three buildings under construction, some more majorly than others. Viking and, Viking and the middle school will have two years of construction time, starting this summer and going over a two-year period of time. We also have on there, you can see playground designs at all of our elementaries, along with those STEM labs that were mentioned in the referendum also. So, the playground designs are all looking to be done this summer with the playgrounds. So, here's a few pictures to give you a sneak peek at Viking. This top-left picture here is, would be the new cafeteria area, and these windows are looking into, it's a current, I don't know, tunnel to a gym, but what that would do is they're opening it up with light and getting some more doorways, and that will be pretty much a multi-purpose area. And then, upstairs here is a library media center now, and they're going to, there's going to be a stairway going up to that to open up that, the center of that school. Both ends of the school will get a total remodel, updating all the maintenance, remember on the checklist was the walls and the flooring and all the maintenance that needed to be done. So, this, some pictures of how the hallways will look, bathroom updates. And then, this is a picture of the STEM lab that we've been talking about. So, just an area for all different staff to use to enhance students' learning. We have some poster boards being made that will be set up within the school, so, and we'll make sure those are online. And then, Holman Middle School, this is the current entrance where the buses drop off and the parents pick up on that side of the building, on the east side. So, you can see it's going to be a much more grand entrance and have a canopy, so, for when it rains. Right now, we all stand out there with our umbrellas, and a nice area for bikes and for students to be. This would be when you walk into the doors, there's going to be a straight line of sight all the way down to the commons area. So, right now, kind of zig-zags, it's hard to know where to go, so families should know how to get around easier. And then, the new cafeteria area, picture of a classroom design. And then, this here is the west side of the building where it's the current older, it used to be an elementary school. We call it the sixth-grade wing. It's on the side closest to subway. So, this is going to be a brand-new, they're going to tear that down a brand-new two-story on the, the west side of the building. So, a sneak peek of what that's like. And with that, I just want to take time to thank our community for all their support and all they've done, because we wouldn't be able to do all that we're doing and keep moving in the direction we are without them and our parents. Definitely, our school district staff, we know it's not easy being in public education and all the new things that we get to experience day in and day out. So, I just want to thank all the staff for all they do and all the hard work and dedication they have. And our volunteers that come in and help us, and our Board of Education have really dedicated a lot of time. There's so much behind the scenes that goes on that no one knows, and I just want to thank the Board of Education for all that they do. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. My name is Sven Strutz. I am the attorney for the school board, and I'm going to present some introductory remarks just to set the stage for how the annual meeting works and where it comes from. I'll make these preliminary remarks, and then, before I turn it over to you, the electors, the roots of a school board's, or of a school district's annual meeting can be traced back to our country's founding and New England town meetings. These annual meetings are kind of the last vestige of true grassroots democracy, but over the course of time, the business of school districts became too complicated to be governed by annual or even more frequent periodic electors' meetings. So, eventually, the legislature created Boards of Education, and over the years, there's been a series of court cases defining what is the proper responsibility of the Board of Education versus what is the responsibility of electors. And these court cases reflect an increasing jurisdiction by the, by the school board at the expense of electors. Indeed, unless there is a specific, unless a particular question has been committed to the electors by statute, that question is reserved to the school board. For example, the budget is not an action item on the, on the agenda for an annual meeting. The Attorney General has advised that the governing body cannot be compelled to make changes suggested by citizens at the hearing on a proposed budget. In addition, while electors at the annual meeting have the power to vote for a tax to operate the school district, the school board ultimately has the power and duty to make adjustments to the tax if it is insufficient or greater than what is needed for school district purposes. But despite its limited power, the annual meeting is still required by state law, and electors of the district are charged with taking certain actions during the annual meeting. With this in mind, the agenda tonight addresses items which will be, which require the approval of electors who are present this evening. We will be following the agenda that was published for this evening. There will be an opportunity, however, to raise additional questions if those questions are within the power of an annual meeting. In addition to that, one of my jobs is to assist the chair in running, in running the meeting in an orderly fashion. We will use Robert's Rules of Order to govern the meeting, and my experience is, is that the meeting will run most smoothly if we follow the following procedure. Please approach the microphone, if you want to speak, please approach the microphone in an orderly fashion, and then wait for the chair to call on you. Once the chair has called on you, please identify yourself, including the municipality in which you reside when you speak. If you are making a motion, speak carefully, speak slowly so that the clerk is, make sure that we were recording the correct motion. Once a motion has been made and seconded, we request that whoever speaks in favor of the motion be followed by somebody who is opposed to the motion, and vice versa, until everyone has had a chance to speak. If there is lopsided support or opposition to a motion, we might have more on one side or the other, but we will start by toggling back and forth between the two positions. After speaking, you cannot speak again on an issue unless no one else wants to speak. We ask that everyone limit their presentation to five minutes. Votes will at least initially be decided orally. However, if an elector requests, the votes can be decided by hand count, and if a majority of the requested, if a majority of the electors request it, we can utilize paper ballots to record a vote. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 120.08 Sub 3, only electors are eligible to vote. That means residents of the district who are over the age of 18 and have been residents of the district for more than 28 days prior to today. If there is a challenge to a voter, I will administer an oath to the challenged individual who, who will then, then be allowed to vote. That is, that is the end of the procedure in the, in the event of a challenge. Does anybody have any questions about the procedure that I have laid out? If not, the first, the first order of business is selection of a chair, which, which can be anybody. We will select a chair for tonight's special electors' meeting. Nominations do not require a second. I will then ask for additional nominations and then close the nominations. I request that you do not move to close the ballot. You will then vote on the persons nominated. If there's only one person nominated, then we've got an easy job in voting. If two, then the chair will be determined by a majority of those voting. If there are three or more nominees, again, a majority of those voting will determine who is elected chair. However, if there is no majority in those, among those three candidates, the lowest vote getter will drop out, and we will re-vote among the remaining two. If there is a tie for least vote getter, we will flip a coin to determine who is dropped out. Does anybody have, any questions about that procedure? If not, then I will ask for nominations for somebody to serve as chair of tonight's annual meeting.
My name is Barb Wench. I reside at N6905 Pine Lane in Holman. I make a motion to elect Jennifer Deek as chairperson of the budget hearing and annual meeting.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations for who should be serving as chair tonight? Going once, going twice? We have one nomination, so Jennifer will be serving as chair, but I will ask that there just be a voice vote confirming that. All those in favor of... All those in favor of Ms. Deek serving as, as chair this evening?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. So, a copy of the minutes for the October 24th, 2022 annual meeting has been included in the annual report supplement booklet. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the 2022 annual meeting minutes as presented? So please approach the microphone and state your name and address before making your motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the 2022 board meeting as published.
Your name and address?
Cheryl Hancock, 1007 Deerfield in Holman, Village of Holman.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion?
My name is Khadija Islam, W 8243 Tower Street in the town of Onalaska, and I second the motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion to this motion? And a third time, any discussion? Okay, see none? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay, the next order of business is the 2023-24 Budget Summary Report. Our Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Julie Holman, will present this report.
Good evening. Not used to facing this way instead of that way, so bear with me. Welcome to the annual meeting and thank you for attending this evening. I am Julie Holman, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, and I will be presenting updated information on the original budget for the 2324 fiscal year and share information on the proposed tax levy for certification. The budget hearing agenda this evening includes a presentation of the 2324 original budget in DPI summary format. There were copies in the back. If you did not receive one, it is also posted online in the board documents as well as it will be posted after this meeting when the budget is acted upon by the board through the board meeting. It'll be on our website. In addition, we will take a look at the tax levy recommendation for school taxes payable in calendar year 2024 and then the budget hearing portion for the electors is part of the question and discussion at the end of the presentation. So budget forecasting and development is a continuous process. The 2324 budget development specifically began in July of '22. In January, the board approved preliminary forecast variables and in May, a preliminary budget was shared with the board. Just last month, the board approved a proposed budget and here this evening, I am sharing the original budget and certification of levy for taxes payable 2024. Following this budget hearing and annual meeting, the school board has their regular meeting in which case the original budget and the certification of levy will be proposed, recommended for adoption. I'd like to start by sharing some perspectives and challenges in current and future budget planning. Most of you are aware of the revenue limit that largely controls the revenue in the general fund in the state of Wisconsin, controlled by state calculations. It does restrict the amount of school district that we can levy in the general fund and is based on a formula based on resident enrollment. The fund balance is being proposed again to be in a deficit spending position and it is supporting ongoing expenses. We also have, as our neighbors do, businesses, private and public alike, the competitive labor, labor market, which is a challenge, and sustainability of competitive salary and benefits in the current school funding environment and the competition throughout our area makes it very challenging. Enrollment has been a topic of conversations for many years. A couple of years ago, we did have the University of Wisconsin-Madison Applied Population Laboratory support a new tenure forecast. I will share some of the current enrollment and happily share that we're not declining as fast as the report had projected, but we still are declining, so that'll be coming in future slides. Substitute staffing continues to be a problem as well as receiving enough applications for our current vacancies. We're pretty well-staffed, but we always need substitutes for all of our areas, especially school bus drivers, but we always have our substitutes posted for application, so continue to struggle a little bit with getting adequate subs. Mental health services, you know, this has been on conversation for many years and accelerated with the pandemic. It continues to be a, a challenge to provide those services to students. We are fortunate to get some sustained funding this year and next through the last legislative session to help support mental health services. The challenge there is finding the providers and, and meeting the students' needs with the available providers. Operations and capital projects and equipment, we have a fabulous voter-approved referendum for many, many upgrades, so we thank the community for that. We continue to have other operational capital projects that were not part of the referendum that we're trying to meet best we can with our available resources. Special education funding, we did get an increase of approximately 3% for reimbursable expenditures, but the increase in special education expenditures is far outweighing that 3% increase in reimbursable expenses. I will talk more later about the increase in the voucher and charter programs and the funding that the state has allocated and increased towards those programs that comes out of our, our eligible aid. And then also, this year, we have a new professional development mandate that is specific to some reading legislation that was passed this summer and it's a requirement and, and increased cost estimated at about $150,000 over the next two fiscal years. Next, I'll talk a little bit about enrollment. So our fall enrollment snapshot, which in the state of Wisconsin is, was 3rd Friday, September, this year it was on September 16th. In the state of Wisconsin, we are required to count and report students 3rd Friday in September, 2nd Friday in January. And so the September 16th headcount was 3,870 students. This is a decrease over last September. So as opposed to the number that Dr. Mueller shared, which is a combination of September and January reconciled for the year, as you know, students come and go throughout the year. The year-on-year change from September of 2022 to September of '23 was 13 students or 300, 3,883 reported last year in September. The distribution of students, as you see on the screen, is, was, it's already changed since September 16th, 330 at Evergreen, 464 at Prairie View, 370 at Sand Lake Elementary, 573 at Viking. You can see the distribution there. 170 are 4K and 24 early childhood, 379 kindergarten through fifth grade, and 879 at the middle school, 1,254 at the high school, which I believe is the largest high school four grades that we've had over there. So as the student population moves through the grades, they, they have a lot at the high school right now. Next is a comparison you're familiar with, which is our student enrollment as, student enrollment in seats compared to capacity. These capacities were revised in 2122 with an industry-standard methodology applied, supported by Nexus, who we are familiar with that's supporting our referendum projects currently. And so you can see the capacities versus the enrollment. We have, according to industry-standard, plenty of capacity in our buildings. The Viking is, has an asterisk on it because 4K students only attend half-day, and so we take the, the 170 students that are enrolled and for capacity purposes, we divide that in half as well as early childhood. They're not occupying space for a full day. So that's the difference between the prior chart and this one on the capacity and, and So this is a chart just to show you the change in enrollment since 2017 to fall of 2023. And it so happens, I picked a year where the middle school is exactly the same, which I thought was kind of interesting. But the important point is our elementary level, K, pre-K through five, has decreased 185 students and our high school has increased 117 students. So you can see at the bottom there, the change in level, elementary, middle, and high school. In 2017, in the fall, we had 1,922 students at the elementary level and this past September, That's a difference of 185 students and that is what we talk about when we say the pipeline is smaller than it used to be, because we don't have the same number of students in the elementary levels. And so we continue to watch this. Like I said, fortunately, it hasn't been as accelerated as it was predicted a couple of years ago through that report, but we continue to keep an eye on this. And it often contradicts the public perception with all the new houses that are in Holman. And so, of course, we try to do our best to project accurately for the next year for both revenue and capacity within our buildings and class sizes, but the trend continues to be a slow decline in overall enrollment. So next, I will get into the original budget summary. It is provided in the DPI format chart and copies are available. In addition to the summary format, which is a five-page document, the budget publication will be republished after board adoption of the final original budget in the Lacrosse Tribune and then those documents will be available online. At any time, if anyone in the public would like to see a line item budget, it is available. Just make an appointment with the district office and that can be made available if you'd like to see every line item in the school district's budget. Next, I'm just gonna talk about some assumptions before we get into these numbers. There, for the assumptions for the original budget, which is the general fund for 2324, there was not a change in legislation for the current level of per pupil categorical aid. The budget assumes the 325 per pupil revenue limit increase over prior year. Hourly base, administrative base, and educator total package wage expenditure increases of 4%, which was board-approved earlier this summer. The employer expenditures for Wisconsin Retirement System and Social Security and Medicare, which is 6.8% and 7.65% respectively, is a percentage of wage and will increase the expenditures there. The July 1 increase for health insurance premium was 4.7% and dental was 5.99%. And then this budget does include the balance of ESER III, which is the pandemic federal relief money, and that balance is just over $2 million and it includes within that $2 million about 1.3 million, which was reserved for heating, ventilation, air conditioning equipment related to our 2022 voter-approved referendum projects. This presentation has been updated to include the original budget compared to the prior two years. The middle column on numbers does continue to say unaudited, but that is more or less our final numbers. We just need to, to have the actual board action on the audit before we can change the title of that column. Later this evening, Crystal Mott will be presenting on the numbers that are a part of that unaudited or column two numbers, 2022-23 fiscal year, and she will expand on that information as unaudited, but pretty much final at this point in time. So the financial administration with the Department of Public Instruction requires that each transaction be identified for administrative and accounting purposes, and the first identification is by fund, which is an independent fiscal and accounting entity requiring its own set of books in accordance with special regulations and restrictions and limitations that earmark each fund for specific activity or for attaining certain objectives. So we will begin with the general operational fund, which we call Fund 10. The first notable change I would like to share is on fund balance. The column four at the bottom indicates an estimated June 30th, 2024 general fund balance of $15,528,000. If you look directly to the left of that, that is the unaudited June 30th, 2023 fund balance of 17.4 million. This becomes the starting fund balance, July 1, and then it is increased by revenue, decreased by expenditures to get the end result of an estimated 15.5. You will notice the decrease year-on-year and that is an estimated $1.9 million from June 30th of '23 to June 30th of 2024. This slide shows the decree, or the increase in, excuse me, local revenue sources for general operations. The local general fund revenue from property tax, mobile home tax, and other tax are increasing with the recommended tax levy this evening from 12.1 million to 12.9 million. The major increase is due to tax revenue in the general fund associated with 468,000 increase in private school voucher aid deductions. Private school voucher aid deductions are estimated to increase from $1,081,000 in fiscal year '23 or prior year to $1,549,000 in fiscal year '24. The 2024 tax revenue also includes the final year of non-recurring 2019 technology referendum of $450,000. This will be replaced in '24, '25, or next year at this time, by the recurring 650,000 for technology and sinking funds, which was one of the two questions approved in the November 2022 referendum. The total local revenue in the general fund is estimated at $13,693,295 for '23-24. Next is the revenue from other school districts in Wisconsin. So line 18 includes payment for services for open enrollment aid revenue. So when non-resident students open enroll into the school district of Holman, the school district receives $8,618 for an open enrollment regular education student. That's up $394 from last year and $13,470 for a special education student, also up $394 from last year. So the estimated revenue for, from other school districts in Wisconsin for open enrollment is $2,405,76. Next is the state sources of revenue. The state aid categorical, which is on line 31, includes transportation aid and common school fund aid. The general state aid, which is on line 32 for '23-24, as certified on October 15th, is $34,145,250. This is up 800,000 over '22-23. The per pupil categorical aid is estimated at $2,999,000 and it is part of line 37. And the remain, the amount remains at 742 per pupil. That number did not change with the last legislative session. The state revenue sources also includes exempt computer and exempt property aid at $71,000 and the subtotal for the state sources of revenue is estimated at $37,766,145. This is an increase of 2.2% in state sources. Next is the federal sources of revenue and it is estimated at $2,351,000 for '23-24. Federal sources on line 41, special project grants, includes most of the balance of that ESER III pandemic relief money or just under $2 million. The ba, the other portion of the ESER money, 91,000, is in Fund 27 or special education. The ESER money does expire in September of 2024, so the entire balance is budgeted in this fiscal year. And then on line 30, or line 41, source 730, also includes Title 1, 2, 3, and 4 on this line. You You will notice in line forty-five or source seven-eighty the significant decrease from the prior two years. The reason for that is because in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, the district received additional federal funding that flowed through the state of Wisconsin in the form of Get Kids Ahead Aid and Back to School Supplemental Aid. That totaled six hundred and eight thousand and four hundred and thirty-four thousand respectively. So those two awards were one-time in each of those years, and we do not plan for that to continue from the state via the federal government. Next is the general fund other revenues. This is other financing sources and estimated other revenues. You will notice some differences in year-on-year for this, this category as well. For example, on line fifty, long-term obligations. That was a one-time adjustment entry on both revenue and expense. It net-zeroed that fiscal year, and that was for the implementation of the Government Accounting Standards Board requirement eighty-seven to record leases. So that was a one-time event. And then last year, if you look in the second column of numbers, you see one hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. That was the record, recording the proceeds for the sale of our Oak Grove Elementary School. So again, a one-time revenue in that category. Toward the bottom, you'll see an increase in line fifty-three, refund of dispersment. This is primarily increasing due to planned increase in E-rate funding. So E-rate is a federal reimbursement for eligible connectivity and technology projects. And so our executive director of instructional, era of IT is planning for some increase in E-rate based on some projects that are currently underway, so that revenue is showing an increase in twenty-three, twenty-four. Total estimated revenue in other sources is two hundred and fifty thousand for fiscal year twenty-four. So the estimated total general fund revenue for twenty-three, twenty-four is fifty-six million, one hundred, one thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Where the money comes from. So this is just a quick pie chart to demonstrate, based on the information I just shared, on the percentage of revenue in the general fund and where it comes from. You can see here that sixty-seven percent is state source, followed by twenty-three percent of local tax revenue. You can see clearly that the majority of the dollars do come from the state and are mostly dictated under the revenue limit formula as far as general fund revenue. So next, I will move on to the general fund expenditure budget, beginning at the top of the page of the two-page summary. The subtotal for instruction is estimated at twenty-four-point-four million and represents forty-two percent of the general fund expenditures for fiscal year twenty-four. This section includes both educator and support staff working in an instructional setting as well as the associated supply, material, and equipment. Line fifty-nine is the undifferentiated curriculum, and this is primarily elementary school level and regular curriculum, art, math, language arts, music, science, and social studies, encompassing a majority of the instructional budget. And then you move down into regular curriculum, which is typically middle school and high school under the one hundred and twenty thousand function. The previously mentioned S R dollars are budgeted in both instruction and support services, depending on the type of limited positions that we hired with S R dollars or the HVAC project that I mentioned earlier would be in the next section, not in the instructional budget. There are a number of things that can impact the instructional expenditures, including the addition of more staff, staff attrition, benefit election, premium changes, unemployer benefits, and fluctuation of annual substitute costs as well as wage changes. The subtotal for support services is twenty-one million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. This represents thirty-seven percent of the general fund expenditures. And it does include the one-point-three million in the S R three funding for the HVAC projects. You'll see that information is in line seventy, business administration, which also includes maintenance, custodian, transportation, business services, all within the line sixty-nine. So that is, excuse me, line seventy. So that is where the S R money is located, and it is currently in the custodial and maintenance facility services budget for that project. The total, again, for support services estimated at twenty, twenty-one-point-three million. Next is the non-program expenditure transactions with a estimated subtotal of just under twelve-point-three million, twenty-one percent of the general fund. Line seventy-six represents interfund transfer. There's two components to this nearly seven million dollars. Six-point-seven million is to support the Special Education Fund Twenty-seven, which is not allowed to go into a deficit position. So I will speak to that again when we get to Fund Twenty-seven on the revenue side of the equation. In addition to the six-point-seven for special education, the recommendation for interfund transfer is a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar transfer to Fund Forty-Six, the Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust Fund. Each year, the special education budget has several variables and services that can be added throughout the year, making it quite, quite difficult to predict at times. The instructional services payments to other districts, so line seventy-seven includes both open enrollment payments to other districts as well as voucher payments. So the instructional service payments for open enrollment students out is estimated at just under three-point-seven million dollars. And the estimated Wisconsin Private School Choice Program aid deduction is estimated at one-point-three million dollars. And the Special Needs Scholarship Program aid deduction is estimated at two, two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars, for a total of one-point-five million for private school voucher. This is a summary of the expenditure categories that I just reviewed. An estimated expenditures for the general fund for twenty-three, twenty-four are fifty-eight million, fifty-eight million dollars. This is up three-point-eight-three percent over prior year or two million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. This pie demonstrates the expenditure distribution by function expense. Function identifies the purpose for which the activity is taking place. So earlier, I said the instructional services portion was forty-two percent. This breaks out the support services portions in the remaining, remaining pie slices, students and staff services at eleven-point-six, administrative services at five-point-five, business operations, maintenance, and transportation, about seventeen-point-eight percent, other support services at one-point-nine. And then the blue is the non-program transactions at twenty-one percent. So that's the open enrollment aid deduction as well as the private school voucher aid deduction. This is a summary of the fund balance, revenues, and expenditures in the general fund. So you've seen components of this earlier. The fund balance beginning at seventeen-point-four million, increased by revenues of fifty-six million, reduced by expenditures of approximately fifty-eight million with an estimated total ending fund balance on line seven of fifteen-point-five million next June. Earlier this evening, Dr. Mueller shared the fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures in the annual reporting. This graph has been updated to include the estimated fund balance for next June. And you can see that we are accelerating on the, on the expenditures or being supported by fund balance in the operational funds. And the estimate for next June thirty is approximately twenty-six-point-five percent or the lower end of the goal limit. Next, I will move on to the Special Projects Fund, which is accounting for in Fund Twenty-One. We locally call this the gift account. This fund accounts for all gifts and donations. This budget varies depending on annual gifts received and expended. The funds do carry over for each purpose or individual group. The twenty-three, twenty-four revenue budget is nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. With our current environment, gifts and donations are very uncertain. A budget is entered with the expectation that gift revenue will be carried forward to some extent in fund balance. The twenty-three, twenty-four expenditure budget is the same at nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This actually represents the reconciled carryover for each of those gift accounts within Fund Twenty-One. And then the difference between fund balance and the budget is the scholarship fund reserves, which is also accounted for in Fund Twenty-One. Next, we have a summary for the Special Education Fund Twenty-seven. Both the revenue and expenditure budgets for twenty-three, twenty-four for special education are estimated at ten-point-seven million dollars. As I said earlier, this fund cannot go into a deficit position at fiscal year end, and therefore, the revenue and expenditure budgets are the same. The interfund transfer, you'll see on line ninety-six, as stated earlier, as an expenditure in the general fund, is six-point-seven million. The transfer was also mentioned previous in the summary of revenue and expenditure by function for special education are displayed and in the handout. Because we consider the general and special education funds as our operational funds, and the general fund supports the special education fund, this chart shows a combination of the two expenditures. And this is actually by what we call object code as opposed to function. And so here you see salaries, benefits, purchased services, capital and non-capital objects, insurance, and other objects. And so the important point here is that it does net out the, the interfund transfer. And then it shows the total of sixty-one-point-seven million in combined expenditures for special education and general fund. The salary benefits and contracted substitutes, which is a portion of the red pie chart, is it red on your screen? I think so. It comprises about seventy-five-point-five percent of the gen, of the operational expenditures. So several years ago, the school district of Holman went from paying teacher and educational assistance substitutes in-house through payroll to a contracted service. So those expenses do not appear in the dark maroon color as salary and/or benefit because they're a contracted service, and they are a portion of the red pie piece. And they, they fluctuate every year, but the last few years, they've been a million or so dollars in the, in the general fund expenditures. So combined, again, the operational budget for salary benefits and contracted substitutes is about seventy-five-point-five percent of the budget for operations. Next up is the debt service fund, and this is accounted for in Fund Thirty-nine. This is the voter-approved debt from the capital referendums. And later in this presentation, you will see the debt service levy for taxes payable for twenty, two thousand twenty-four proposed at seven million, ninety-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The principal and interest debt obligations for twenty-three, twenty-four on line one sixty-nine are eleven million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. The Fund Thirty-nine fund balance and any new levy receipts will support these obligations, the payments of principal and interest due in twenty-three, twenty-four. The bottom line shows the outstanding voter-approved indebtedness at the end of the fiscal year, so projected next June thirtieth to be fifty-nine million, one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Additional information about the district's current debt schedule will also be provided in this evening's Treasury Report. This chart shows the school district of Holman's outstanding debt. We currently have four issues. The blue, the largest portion at the top of the chart, represents the thirty-five million that was bonded last February as part of the two thousand twenty-two referendum. And below that is the fifteen million in government obligation notes that was also issued at the same time in two thousand twenty-three. These two make up fifty million of the seventy-four-point-seven-five million approved by the voters in twenty-two Capital Improvement Referendum. The district has not yet issued the remaining amount of seventy-four-point-seven-five million, and this will occur, it depends on the drawdown schedule and the construction schedule, but it is likely to occur, to occur in two thousand twenty-four so that we can complete the remainder of the projects under the referendum. The maroon slice represents outstanding bonds from the high school addition and remodel, model, which was a two thousand nineteen debt issuance. And then the very small corner on the bottom left represents the balance of, which was primarily the construction of the Prairie View Elementary School. This debt was reissued or refunded a couple of years ago with a shorter spend-down cycle and, and interest savings, and it will be paid off next spring. Next up, we have the capital projects funds. This includes both Fund Forty-two and Fund Forty-six. Fund Forty-two is used to record the revenue and expenditures during the construction process for the projects funded through the building bonds. So the fifty million I just talked about was deposited into the capital projects fund, and we draw down on that money as we pay the invoices associated with the referendum. The estimated fund balance for Fund Forty-two for next June is twenty-two-point-nine million dollars and is dependent on that construction progress and the spend-down of those dollars. Fund Forty-six is also accounted for in the Fund Forty's capital projects funds, and this is the Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust Fund. The fund balance is estimated, the portion of fund balance that you see here on line eighty, that is estimated to be Fund Forty-six next June, is seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. This fund must be opened for five years before the district can expend from this fund, so there aren't, there are not any expenditures associated with Fund Forty-six for twenty-three, twenty-four. This is the fourth year of the five-year requirement. The total revenues in this, in the capital projects fund estimated for twenty-three, twenty-four are eight hundred and three thousand dollars. And the total expenditures are estimated at twenty-six, just under twenty-six-point-two million, again entirely on the construction. Next is the school nutrition fund. School nutrition is accounted for in Fund Fifty. The estimated revenue for school nutrition for twenty-three, twenty-four is three million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. The estimated expenditure budget is three million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. The current estimated fund balance for next June is one million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. During the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, school nutrition fund balance continues to support the cost of reduced-priced meals by making those meals free for eligible students. In addition, there are plans for Fund Fifty to support new kitchen equipment as part of the two thousand twenty-two Capital referendum projects. The additional expenditures for the equipment associated with those new kitchens will, or remodeled kitchens will certainly impact future fund balances for school nutrition. The last fund that we have in the school district of Holman is Fund Eighty, and it is the Community Service Fund. In nineteen-twenty, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we opened the Fund Eighty again, it had been closed for a few years, in order to identify district program support for the new Holman Area Boys and Girls Club. The source of this funding is tax levy under the Fund Eighty Community Service. Our local Boys and Girls Club is the biggest in the area, and we are so glad to partner with them in serving our youth. This was a little slow getting going as far as expenditures, and so revenue has exceeded expenditures in the last few years, which has increased the fund balance with this, in this fund. This is a good thing because they have expenses immediately in July, and tax proceeds do not start coming in until January, so it does help with cash flow to support this program. The recommendation is to levy one hundred thousand for the program's estimated twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And this budget supports an education director for the Sale to Success Program, liaison to parents, between parents, school, and the Boys and Girls Club, educational programming, homing, homework support, tutoring, play-based educational activities, part-time tutors. homework support, tutoring, play-based educational activities, part-time tutors, power hour. They have a role in the teen center, and now most currently, they're also coming into our schools and creating relationships with students as well. So that is the community service fund, the estimated revenue and expense for 2324 at That finishes up the summary by fund in DPI budget format. Next, I will discuss key financial figures so that you can see year-on-year changes for the most impactful revenue in the school district of Holman and the tax levy calculation. So our student membership, which is not the same as headcount, so membership removes our open-enrolled, non-resident students, adds back in those residents that have open-enrolled elsewhere, and then we have to calculate a membership ratio. So like a 4K student is only 60%, as opposed to kindergarten through 12th grade is a 1.0. And then we take a three-year average. So if you're looking at line one and saying, "That's not the number of students we said," you are correct. This is membership, not headcount. The membership for -- three-year average membership for 2324 is 4,043 FTE, and that is a decrease in the three-year average over prior year of 19 FTE. Line three is the equalized property valuation certified by the Department of Revenue on October 1st, and that has increased 14.3% over prior year, or $360 million, to $2,879,196,000. These all go into the calculation for revenue limit and the distribution between aid and levy. Line five is the total revenue limit prior to any exemptions being added, and for 2324, that number is $44,701,470, and that's an increase over prior year of just over $1 million. When we add in the exemptions, we have an increase of a total of $1.6 million, and that includes the 450,000 non-recurring technology referendum, a declining enrollment exemption of $221,000, a prior-year open enrollment adjustment of $33,000, the private school voucher aid deduction of a combined $1.3 million and $217,000 for regular and special education. So on line eight, you see the total aid increase of $800,596, which is 2.4%. The allowable limited revenue then, after you take the aid from the total revenue limit, all exemptions, leaves us with line nine, or $12,773,195. That is the maximum general fund levy that we are allowed to levy in the certification, which is proposed tonight and will be certified next week. That limited revenue over prior year, or the general fund levy increase over prior year, is $854,932, or 7.2%. The levy has three different components, both the general fund levy of $12.7 million, and the debt service levy recommended at $7,94,387, and the community service levy that I referenced just prior of $100,000. So the total combined levy recommendation on line 16 for taxes payable 2324, calendar year 24, is $19,967,582. This is a zero increase over total levy in prior year. You can see side-by-side, no change in total levy. It's an increase to general fund and a decrease to both debt service and the community service fund over last year's taxes. The school tax rate, oh, I see a typo, my apologies. The school tax rate for the taxes payable 24 is recommended then at $6.94 per thousand. This is a decrease of 99 cents in the school tax rate over prior year, or a decrease of So to repeat some of that information for you, the recommended school tax levy is the same as last year in its total amount of $19,967,582. This is a zero combined levy change, a 0% increase. The equalized property valuation again went up 14.33%. The school tax levy rate is estimated to decrease by 99 cents over prior year. Each year, we provide some examples of what that means to the property owner, and a reminder that the school levy rate is applied to fair market value, not assessed value. So on a fair market property of $100,000, $200,000, and $400,000, in the examples, you can see the change year-on-year or the decrease with the school tax rate decreasing by 99 cents. The estimated tax calculated then on a school tax, calculated on a $400,000 fair market property value, would be $396 less than prior year, or $2,776. In addition, this year, the legislature increased what's called the school property tax credit, which you will see, residents will see, a change on their tax bill. That is not something we can calculate individually for property owners, but know that after this calculation is applied, you will see a credit reducing that tax obligation for school taxes. And they did appoint something like 27% more money within that tax credit, which hasn't changed for many years. So hopefully, our residents will see some change there and a reduction after the school tax is calculated. So look for your school levy tax credit to help bring that down a little bit. This chart demonstrates some recent history in the tax levy, school tax levy rate in the school district of Holman. The taxes certified for 2019 were at $10.56, and the rate being proposed this evening is $6.94 per thousand. This is a decrease of $3.62 over the course from 2019 to taxes payable 2024. So this chart shows aside by, shows the two years prior, as we talked about earlier. This is specific to the proposed property tax levy, and you will see the total school levy, the same as last year, and the percentage change is also zero. The distribution, again, between funds is what is being proposed to change for taxes payable 2024. This is an example of the school tax levy recommendation that is on the school board agenda later this evening, with a total recommended certification of tax levy of $19,967,582. And now we can move into the public hearing.
So we will now open the budget hearing for public comment. If you have any questions or comment, please come up to the microphone, state your name, address, and question or comment. So are there any questions or comments on the budget hearing for Julie?
Good evening. Patrick Barlow, 907 Dana Lane Holman. As usual, great job. Appreciate all the effort that goes into this budget planning every year. I would say just a couple of questions or concerns regarding the use of fund balance for ongoing expenses, and also concern for this hidden amount of Esser funding for limited-term positions. It's not generally a good practice, and I don't know, I guess I can only state my thoughts here. This is not a Q&amp;A, correct? So it would be just good to understand or report to the community a little bit better understanding, I mean, drivers of the use of fund balance, where that fund balance is being directed to in the budget. And I assume as this Esser funds goes away, that if these are funding limited-term positions, that they would go away, because by essence, they're limited-term positions. But it is concerning that we're using temporary funds potentially for staffing positions. And just long-term, I think there's this other specter hanging its head, I believe around 2025 or so. At some point, the state voucher system caps will be going away, and I don't know what our plan is as a district to try and deal with those. It's hard to predict. But I would ask that district staff perhaps share, at least in this budget, we're impacted about $1.5 million into that program. I could only see that going higher, and with the other issues about using fund balance, there's just some factors here that make me concerned. But I know we have a lot of sharp minds in this district to deal with these issues, but I would just lay that, those questions out there to be addressed as we move forward.
So Patrick, I do think that I can respond to some of those questions. I think that's an allowable, that's why you're here. So I'll do my best. In regards to fund balance being used for ongoing expenses, it is certainly a concern of mine and of our administration, and we've been concerned about that for several years. There's been continuing expenses and salaries associated with that, with the intention of using fund balance, unless we get significant increase in resources, that'll be difficult to sustain. So you are definitely correct on that manner. We've been very fortunate in Holman to have a very good fund balance, but it's not, as you could see from that fund balance chart and the accelerated decline, it is not a sustainable source for ongoing expenses, and never has been a best practice to use fund balance for ongoing expenses, more for one time. And so we continue to look at that, and we're concerned about that, and we are in the midst of making various plans with the board members and with administration to set us up for future success and look at those forecasts and determine either reduction in expenditures or possibilities of influencing increased revenue for the general fund. The other concern mentioned earlier is the increase to special education and the costs associated with that and the requirement for the inter-fund transfer. We did get 3% increase from 30% to 33%. That is based on the total allocation by the board. It's not a subcertain amount, and so it depends on what every other school district does spend in special education to see if we even reach the 33%. So that continues to be a concern and something we advocate for, increase to help support that. And it's an area that often has surprises in expenditures. For example, from 2223 to, excuse me, 20, from prior year to the one that was just audited, we went up nearly $1 million just in special education. And so there's concerns around that as well, and working with our executive director of Student Services to help identify some areas to slow that growth in expense, because it's definitely accelerated well over what the state is allocating to help support special Your other question was on Asser III and the limited-term positions, so we hired those positions for two years. The individuals in those positions were offered limited-term contracts. They are part of our current discussions in prioritizing, looking through areas such as attrition and possible retention of positions that we have prioritized in that area. So that is continued work. Nothing has been decided on it, but we are well aware of that challenge. This is the fiscal cliff that we've been talking about for a couple of years that comes with an influx of federal funding that we're not used to. So typically, we only get about 2% of our funding from the federal government. In the last several years, we've seen quite an influx, and so also working to figure out how we are going to sustain the opportunities and programs and services provided to students without that funding going forward. And then the state voucher caps, each year, they try to get rid of that cap sooner than what is in statute. The increases to state vouchers, the dollar amount increases, especially to the 9th through 12th grade level this year, were significant and concerning. Conversations we've had with the board on, like just understanding how that all works and trying to advocate to slow that growth and that impact to public education in the state of Wisconsin, because you can see that it definitely causes a challenge. It reduces our aid, and in order for us to be more whole, we need to put it on the tax levy to recoup some of those dollars, or the 1.5 million would be gone from the school district of Holman to serve our students. So, thank you, Patrick.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Are there any other questions or comments on the budget hearing? Okay, and a third time, any other questions or comments on the budget hearing? Okay, so that concludes the budget hearing. We will now move on to the treasurer's report provided by Director of Business Services, Crystal Mott, on behalf of Board Treasurer Barb Wench.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting the treasurer's report. So we have a statutory obligation to present our receipts and expenditures since the last annual meeting. On this slide here, you will see information includes amounts from the auditor's draft statements, as well as a reference to the budget information just presented by Julie. Again, that document is in the back, and it will be made available on the district website. Within that document, the second column of numbers were displayed as unaudited from 2223. Again, as Julie mentioned, while these reference drafts are unaudited, our audit is near completion, and I wouldn't anticipate any changes to the 2223 figures. The reason we have some variations between the draft audit figures and the DPI budget figures is so that our inter-fund transfers are not counted twice, or if there are revenues and expenses of the same amount offsetting each other in between funds. So at the bottom, the total revenue of all funds represents the sum of revenues in each fund, less any transfers, and that amount on the bottom is representing the total receipts of the school district since the last annual meeting. This slide represents the total expenditures for each fund, and again, as with the previous slide, the figures do just vary slightly so that those inter-fund transfers are not counted twice, to avoid overstating our expenditures. And again, at the bottom of this slide, you'll see the total expenditures of all funds of the school district since the last annual meeting. The balance sheet in the auditor's statement shows in all funds, year-ending total assets And our total liabilities from the balance sheet shows in all funds, year-end total of $4,601,972, with the district having sufficient cash or receivables to cover these liabilities. Fund balance is important. It provides a complete picture of our financial position and accounts for all assets and liabilities. So our general fund, unaudited, ending fund balance is $17,434,556. Again, this information was also shared in the original budget. This amount is important in relation to our annual expenditures. Our general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is 31.2% as of June 30th, 2023. Within the fund balance, we have designations, including restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Sinking funds, funds for our post-employment, or funds reserved for the construction would be examples of restricted or committed funds. So the unassigned or assigned fund balance percentage as, excuse me, balance as a percentage of expenditures is at 28.7%. As was shown on the slide, we do have an upper limit goal of 28.9%, which had been exceeded in previous years. And again, our current budget is including deficit spending, which will continue that downward trend that we saw. downward trend that we saw. Here are the unedited fund balances for the remaining funds as of June 30 for a total all funds ending fund balance of $78,145,697. Again, available on the budget sheet. Our cash balance is $76,68478 as of June 30, with the separate funds listed below. So here we have either a surplus or deficit to report. A deficit is going to occur when our expenditures during the year exceed our revenues received, so we do have a general fund deficit to report for 2223. In mirroring the budget numbers, the unedited total revenue and other financing source indicated balance of $57,964,811, with the total expenditures and other financing uses at $59,484,435. The difference between these two is the $1,619,625 for that general fund deficit. A budget deficit was initially budgeted, excuse me, but both actual revenues exceeded budgeted revenues and actual expenditures exceeded budgeted expenditures. So it resulted in that difference of $28,669 actual to budget. Later in tonight's agenda, recommended action will be presented on our tax levy for the 2324 school year with a recommended tax levy amount of $19,967,582 presented at the Our debt at the end of 2223 is $67,720,000. By state law, our debt may not exceed 10% of the equalized value of the district. That's under Section 67.031B. So in 2022, our equalized value was $2,676,667,956. So we have the 10% amount of that. We deduct our long-term debt as of June 30. We add in our amount in our debt service fund, and it leaves the district with a margin of indebtedness of $208,325,201. Julie just presented the same slide. Again, we have the dark blue at the bottom, which is from the Prairie View refunding. This debt is maturing with the final principal and interest payment on April 1, 2024. The high school addition remodels in that maroon color. This debt matures April 1, 2030. And then we have the 2023 notes of $15 million and the bonds of $35 million, which again is that $50 million of the $74.75 million. And again, intending to borrow that remaining $24.75 million in 2024. We do practice our debt defeesance to prepay debt when it's feasible, and this in turn reduces our terms and total interest and then reduces our debt taxes. Here is a slide from our annual report. This is showing our comparative per pupil expenditures, which is a lagging indicator of the resources that are utilized to deliver services to students. This does exclude transportation, capital, debt amounts, but just more directly is for those costs directly serving students. So you can see that while we are within our targets, we are spending more compared to our peers and compared to the state average. Next, we'll get into more detail of the draft financial statements and the independent auditor's reports. This information was previously presented to members of the board and members of administration. An unmodified opinion was received on our financial statements, federal and state awards, with one finding. So as mentioned, an unmodified opinion was received, which is when the auditor concludes that the statements give a true and fair value in accordance with the financial reporting framework. Again, we want that unmodified opinion from our auditors. So here is a page from our draft financial statement. This does demonstrate that unmodified opinion of our financial statements. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that were identified. However, there was one noncompliance, which will be addressed on an upcoming slide. This is from our federal awards, again, receiving an unmodified opinion with no material weaknesses or deficiencies. And the same for our state, unmodified and qualifying as a low-risk audit. This slide addresses the noncompliance finding that was noted in the financial statements. It relates to our actual expenditures being more than our budgeted expenditures. We did have some unforeseen expenses. We experienced greater needs in our vacancies, including employee support personnel and substitute personnel, that did cause our expenses to exceed our budgeted amount. We do monitor the budget and formally amend it when necessary, and will continue to do so so that expenditures do not exceed the budget. So as we near the completion of our 2223 audit, the following items bulleted here will be finalized. The management discussion and analysis, or MDNA, is provided in like a non-technical format written by district staff and incorporated with information from the auditor to hopefully help with understanding and provide some narratives as well. Our reporting cannot be completed until all of the financial statements are complete. The state provides our auditor with other reported information that has not quite been finalized to allow them to finalize aspects of our audit. Additionally, the auditor also provides us a management letter to include with our information that has not yet been received. When the report is received, copies are shared with the board and also made available to the public via the district website. So any questions about the audit report or the treasurer's report presented?
Okay, we will continue on to Agenda Item 8, New Business. On the handout available as you entered, there were sample motions listed for these items. Item 8.1 is to set annual salaries of the board, school board members for the 2324 school year. Presently, board members are paid $3,450 per year. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Cheryl Hancock, the Village of Holman, I think is what you wanted. I would move to set the salaries for the school board to $3,600 for the upcoming year. It's an increase of $150.
Okay, would anyone, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion. Patrick Barlow, 907 Dana Lane, Village of Holman.
All right, thank you, Patrick. All right, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion regarding this motion? And a third time, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to Item 8.2, the reimbursement of school board members' expenses.
Kristin Mueller, Town of Onalaska. I would move to authorize reimbursement of school board members when incurred in the performance of their duties in accordance with our Policy 144.1 compensation and also with our travel reimbursement procedures in the school district of Holman.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on this motion?
Nina Swanson, Village of Holman. I vote to second it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on this motion? And a third time, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, next is the recommendation for the property tax levy for the 2324 school year. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Barb Wench, N6905 Pine Lane. I move to recommend a tax levy for the 2324 school year in the amount of $19,967,582 upon all taxable property in the school district of Holman for the purposes of operating and maintaining the district schools, community service programs, and paying for debt for school projects.
Thank you. Is there a second on this motion?
Chris Law, 802 Granum Street, Village of Holman. I will second the motion.
All right, thank you. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion regarding this motion? And a third time, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next is the authorization for short-term borrowing. Would anyone like to make this motion?
Kadija Islam, W8243 Tower Street, Town of Onalaska. I move to authorize the district to short-term borrow up to $1 million as needed to meet cash flow needs between today's date and next year's annual meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Lindsay Need, Town of Holland. I second.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion regarding this motion? And a third time, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 8.5 is to set the date and time for the 2024 annual meeting or authorize the school board to set the dates and time. Would anyone like to make the motion?
Bridget Todd Robbins, 811 Greenwood Street, Village of Holman. I move to set the date of the 2024 annual meeting and budget hearing be set for October 28, 2024.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on this motion?
Maggie Smith, 1318 Crockett Drive, Holman. And I will second the motion.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion regarding this motion? And a third time, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Oops. Moving on to 8.6. Is there any other business that needs to come forth as permitted at this annual meeting? Okay, any other business that needs to come forth as permitted by this meeting? And a third time, any other business that needs to come forth as permitted by this annual meeting? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item. So before we adjourn, I want to take a moment to thank everyone for coming tonight. We appreciate you all being here. And I am now looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Kadija Islam, Town of Onalaska. I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, no second is needed. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.